I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we had an election. So, I need a motion and a second to accept the resolution after you read it?
Yes ma'am, I need to read the time. Resolution thirteen, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, declaring the results of the general election held on March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. Now what do we do? Do you have to swear a sin or anything like that?
No ma'am.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution thirteen, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, now it is time to... Thank you, thank you. Carl, congratulations on being re-elected.
Thank you.
I would now like to have the reorganization meeting where we do the appointment of mayor and then the appointment of vice mayor, so I will now accept nominations for mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and let me take this, please.
You got it.
I want to go ahead and start something and say something on the whole mayor vice mayor thing before we nominate people. And it's been so tense with who's gonna be mayor, who's gonna be not mayor, with input from the community, and this goes on before us. And I think the transfer of the gavel or whatever should be more of a celebration on on timing, on who's best suited for that year to be mayor. And I know I wanted to be mayor, and I know we all can be mayor. And so I want to make sure that going forward that we have fun with this, and it's not a tense time, and it's not based solely on community input, because this is a decision that's intimate to us five and us five alone. And we're everywhere together, we spend a ton of time together, we spend our personal time together, and nobody knows who should be mayor more than us five. So you guys have become my friends, and whether the community likes it, you know, most everybody in this room are my friends. And that's what it takes to help run a city. So, having said that, Matt, I'm not gonna nominate you to be mayor.
Does this mean I'm off the island?
And it's not time for it's not time for me to be mayor either, you know, we gotta wait our turns, but I would like to proudly nominate two of my friends to be mayor and vice mayor, and I'm gonna do it at the same time because we can. So I would like to nominate my friend and buddy Mark Marciano to be mayor, and my friend Rochelle Litt to be vice mayor. And if you two would agree on that, I'd appreciate a second.
I second Mark's nomination first, and I accept your nomination, but I guess somebody has to second.
I'll second Rochelle as vice mayor.
Are we all good? Max, do we need anything else? Okay.
Let's have fun with it from now on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations Rochelle. Oh, wait, I'm not done, I'm not done. This is the only vice mayor shirt there is, so after work you get this one for the next year. It looks good.
It'll be a dress, it'll look good with my boots.
I'm just saying there's a budget cut.
Can I take a point of personal privilege then as mayor for the past two years?
Yes, you can.
I just want to say that it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve our city, and we all are very lucky to have the council and the staff that we do, and we are all very lucky to have the residents that we do that have given us a ninety-four percent approval rating. So with that, here you go, Mark. And here you go.
Now I actually have to work, huh?
And we need to have Patty read Resolution fourteen by title.
Can the clerk please read Resolution fourteen for the record, please? Resolution fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, appointing the mayor and vice mayor for the city, providing an effective date for other purposes. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I gotta put this down, right? I don't actually use that until the end?
Don't break anything.
Well, welcome, everybody. This is the biggest crowd we've had in a long time, so welcome, everyone, thank you for coming tonight. Hope that you'll come to more meetings. The City of Palm Beach Gardens is a special place. We've got five great people up here, we all work very well together, and I think you're gonna see a very smooth transition. Now, the mayor basically has a little bit of additional role, but ultimately this city runs not because of the people up here, but because of the people over there and everybody that's not here that work in this great city. In a moment, you're gonna hear a great presentation about some of the great things that our staff do in this great city. And, you know, the relationships that we all create, the things that we do, mean something. We like to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward and our best face forward. I have a great relationship with our city manager, and I look forward to maintaining that professional relationship so that we make sure that we do the things that are important to the residents of this city and our neighbors. Every mayor's gonna do their own thing, there's no way I can keep up with what Mayor Marino did this past year. She was everywhere all the time, and I don't know how you did it. But I thank you for it, and I'm gonna rely on you and your time and your energy and your expertise to keep the face of this city moving forward as we make our relationships and keep our relationships with our neighbors throughout the county. Same thing with Rochelle, you've worked extremely hard, you've become a good friend to me as well, and your commitment to the League of Cities, to what happens to, how the state relates to things that happen here in the city is gonna be very important for me, because you've already laid the groundwork. And for everybody in the audience and everyone in the city, you just have to know that you've got two extremely hardworking and talented women here that do a great thing for the city. Carl has a real knack for understanding and communicating with our residents, better than most. He is just one of us and one of you, and that's not something that's easy to do. And I think people feel very comfortable reaching out to Carl. And he does a great job bringing those those issues to us so that we can make sure we're doing the right thing for the residents. And Matt has a great way of researching and getting into the details, something that is probably better than the rest of us. And he brings a very important role to the council that, you know, it's not always understood, but we understand it because we know what he goes through and the time commitment that he puts. So for all of that, I hope you all feel very comfortable with where this city's gonna go. And I don't know if Mom and Dad, you're watching out there, but hi, and thanks for everything you've done to make me the person I've become. So with that, are there any additions, deletions, and modifications? No, sir. Any announcements? No, sir. Presentations? No. Alright, so items of, items of resident interest and board committee reports. So why don't we start, as we usually do, with Rochelle?
First off, I want to congratulate Carl on his election results, and I look forward to working with you, going forward to keep the city the happy, wonderful place that it is, and doing all the good stuff we started. And I want to thank Maria for doing a great job. I think we made the right decision at a time where we were all new and the city was going through so much change to appoint Maria for the second term and to let her represent us for these past two years. Thank you. This month, I guess the two highlights of the month were the Leadership Palm Beach County Songwriters in the Round fundraising event. They raised money for the Student Leadership Grow Program. These are the future leaders of our cities, county, and state. They're high school students, and the funds go to their leadership program. We had the Palm Beach Gardens North County District Park Cornerstone Ceremony, seeing your name on a plaque on a city building for the first time. There's nothing like it, so it was an interesting day, and I want to thank the city manager, the staff, and my fellow council members for, council members, for their forward thinking and being able to get that project done through the county as quick as we did, floating the bond and doing what we had to do to make that a reality for our residents as quickly as possible. I met with Hal Valashay on homelessness, County Commissioner Hal Valashay on homelessness, and his Veterans Initiative to get one hundred veterans off the street within the next three months and into housing. I held my first meeting as the Chair of the Environmental Subcommittee of the Economic Development Committee of the Palm Beach North Chamber. Stay tuned for details on an exciting new program that will recognize local businesses and incentivize other businesses to be environmental stewards and utilize sustainability standards in their business models. I attended the Ballin Isles Foundation Grant Award Ceremony, where several departments of our city were recognized with grant awards, including our police department, our fire department, and our Parks and Recreation Department. So thank you to the residents of Ballin Isles Foundation for those awards. We had a Palm Beach North Chamber breakfast before hours with Senator George Lemieux. He took an interesting look at the top twenty-five most important people in the history of Florida through his book, Florida Made. And in case you're interested, of course, Henry Flagler was one. He listed Walt Disney as two, and Fidel Castro as three. There was a League of Cities luncheon meeting, the Palm Beach Gardens Women's Club meeting with a program on the Lord's Place. There was a forum celebration at Chabad Palm Beach Gardens that was a lot of fun. I supported Equality Palm Beaches Gala. And this morning, I attended a very important program through the Jewish Community Relations Council and the ADL on antisemitism. There was one up in Palm Beach Gardens last night, and then there was another one in Boynton this morning.
Matthew.
Okay, I'd like to begin by welcoming former Mayor Joe Russo tonight. For those of you who don't know, and I'm sure everybody does, Joe served for twenty-seven years on this dais, twelve times as mayor. Great, greatly responsible for what the city looks like today. I'd also like to welcome former Mayor Martino back there, who did an excellent job with this city. Want to congratulate my friend Mark Marciano. I believe Mark has the intellect and the temperament to lead this council into the year 2020. I look forward to having you as our mayor. You'll do a great job, really happy for you. And Rochelle, congratulations so much. We've become friends over the last two years, and we've developed a routine. We work together on many projects. Rochelle goes first, I go second, and it works very, very well. We both know what areas to cover, so we've got a nice working relationship there. Maria, you did an excellent job this last two years. You've worked so hard, and I think the city is greatly indebted to you for your tireless service to this city. So thank you so much. All honor to you for the great work that you've done. You're a good guy too, Carl. You've done a great job, and congratulations on your on your on your election. Really a model for me in how you handle all the issues and how you handle all the personalities up here. Nobody does it better than you do, so you did great work. With that being said, I'll do it quickly. I attended the NCNC breakfast, which was wonderful, as always, Sal does a great job. Attended the Palm Beach Gardens Historical Society. We all attended the Ballin Isles Foundation Award Ceremony. Went to the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. FDOT had a presentation concerning traffic on Northlake Boulevard, which concerns all of us. Went to the BDB breakfast. Attended Chabad's thirteenth anniversary celebration. I want to congratulate Reb Vigler and Rebetzin Chana and the congregation on their thirteen years here in the gardens. They've made a tremendous contribution to the growth of the gardens. And finally, tonight I attended the Palm Beach State Community Leaders Open House. So that was my month. Maria.
If anyone wants to get up and take a break, Maria will go over her report here and list the things that she's done.
You guys want to go eat and come back, she'll be finishing up?
It's only this long. It is what I do, though. I mean, I love the city and I love investing the time in our city, and because of the job that I have as a real estate broker, it affords me the time to make my own schedule. So in that schedule included, hosting the vice school student James Delano as mayor for the day, and I actually, I thought he was gonna come back today to give a little report, 'cause he said he needed to do some public speaking, so I invited him back, but I don't see him here today. Along with Mark, we represented the city at the Baskin Palmer Evening Vision Event. And along with the rest of the council, as you heard, we attended the Gardens District Park Cornerstone Ceremony. And I have to say...
There he is.
James, put in a piece of paper. I'm sorry, we're out of order, I apologize, okay? Because James wanted to speak, and he wanted to address us, and we actually have passed that portion, but we're going to make an ex... We didn't do public comments yet?
We haven't done comments yet.
Oh, James, quick, get your comment card in. Sorry, go ahead. Back to what I was saying about the district park. I don't think everybody out there knows how phenomenal our our park department is and our grounds department. And they have moved heaven and earth to get that park going and up and running. And I look forward to the many soccer games and other field sports that will be there and the families and the children that we're gonna host in the future in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. It's really what we do, and we can't do it without our staff. And I'm just in awe of what you all do every day, so thank you for that. I attended a hospice event, and as vice chair of the Transportation Planning Agency, I met with the new Secretary of the Department of Transportation, and I had the opportunity to discuss TRIRAIL, the Beeline Highway Expansion and Possible Wall, I-95 at Northlake on PGA. And interestingly enough, the first words out of this gentleman's mouth, the first word was "safety." Second two words were "congestion relief," and then he talked about data. So those are his three main focuses for the coming term. Hopefully, he can work well with the state, the counties, and the cities to get that done. Followed that up with several meetings with the county, the county commissioners and residents in reference to the traffic light at Northlake Boulevard, along with several other of our council members. Attended the annual NCNC breakfast, attended the Literacy Coalition of Palm Beach County Love of Literacy Luncheon. And I am the newly appointed delegate for the Southeast Florida Transportation Committee, and we had our monthly meeting. And this is a great committee, 'cause it really helps to coordinate transportation issues throughout the Southeast Florida region. And at this meeting, we approved the Regional Corridor Network Map. This all sounds like a lot of this, but this map helps to direct where our funds are gonna go, and it sets the corridors which are eligible for regional incentives program funding and provides incentives for local governments and private sector to help pay for critically needed projects. Attended the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council Meeting, attended the Ballin Isles Charitable Foundation Awards Meeting, Awards Lunch, or was it just a cocktail event reception? There were no cocktails, though. I think there was a lot of lemonade. Attended the Transportation Planning Agency Lane Repurposing Workshop, which is an exercise to help us plan for the future and think ahead of the curve. Attended the TPA Monthly Board Meeting, and we had a very interesting presentation by the county as to the future of Northlake Boulevard and what was going on in the northern, I mean, the western part of the county. And I'd like to thank several of our staff members that attended that meeting in support and also to make sure that the correct information was getting said and put out there, so thank you for that. League of Cities General Membership Luncheon and District One Luncheon. I attended the Palm Beach County Sports Commission Sports Hall of Fame Dinner, and I would like to recognize Officer Dorian Hawkins of the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department. He was the winner of the Outstanding Sports Contributor for His Service in the form of clinics, camps, recreational and travel teams for over five hundred kids annually for over the past thirteen years. He's not here tonight, but I just wanted to make sure you all knew that he did this. I'd also like to also recognize was Alton Butler, who was the coach of the PBG JV Pop Warner Gators, who won the national title. I presented to the Business Development Board at their annual familiarization, say that three times fast, familiarization breakfast for national site consultants, and attended the upper level breakfast the next day, along with Matthew. Attended two Smart and Connected Regions workshops to help fulfill some of the requirements from the recent grant we received from the Florida DEO. And attended the Magic of Toquesta US One Renewal and History Event, also the Northlake Boulevard Workshop and the Palm Beach North Economic Development Meeting to discuss the DEO grant and affordable housing. And I think I'm done.
Thank you, and no one will ever top the number of events that Maria goes to, so thank you for that. Carl?
Mine's gonna be easy, 'cause I slipped into a coma after my election. So I ran pretty hard for seven months, and, you know, I tried to be every place in the city for a long time, and you guys know, especially the former mayors here, Mike and Joe, that, you know, the last six weeks of a campaign, you're really literally everywhere. And I didn't know the pressure and the stress that was upon me until it was over, and I could hardly keep my eyes open for a while, so I didn't do much the last month. So, but I do want to thank Mayor Marino for the last two years of your leadership. You were excellent at it, and I'm really, you know, we've grown, we were put into this spot as five, for whatever reason, and we've grown together as a team, and I like that. So, you know, I love this city, I've been working for it for most of my adult life, and I'm friends with, like, Joe, twenty-five years, at least, maybe thirty now. And it's exciting to be a part of it for another three years, and I'm looking forward to you guys being right where you're at as well. And it's nice to see our staff is here, I see our firefighters are here, which is nice. They're not wearing red, so I'm hopefully, that's something good. And that's all I've got to say, so let's get on with the year. Mark?
Alright, well, apparently I forgot to recognize my beautiful wife in the audience here. I guess I don't take you for granted, really, Brandy, I don't. But thanks for coming tonight, and go pick up Thomas. Also, apparently my parents are now online, so hi, Mom and Dad, it's real. Carl, congratulations on a really well-run campaign, and to Howard, I know he's not here tonight, but also to a hard-fought campaign, and it's very hard. But we are gonna have a dress code, so you are gonna make sure you at least wear a collared shirt, no flip-flops and shorts to future meetings.
No, I'm limited out, shorts and flip-flops, man.
My meeting, my month was busy with a lot of different things, some of the things relating to the city as well. The mayor and I went to the Baskin Palmer event at the Breakers, what a fabulous place to be. And Maria, you looked fantastic, so thanks for making me look good, too. The district park, to our former mayor Joe Russo and the other mayors that were on the council, you guys were the ones that paved the way for that park. Our names are on that wall, but really, it should be yours. But you do have the name for the park, and my kids keep saying, "We're going to Russo, Russo." I don't even know who Russo is, but your name will live in the city forever, so so thank you for you guys for really creating that park, 'cause we're the ones, everyone's gonna benefit from it. Of course, I voted on March twelfth, NCNC meeting was great, Ballin Isles Charity Ceremony. It's really great to see other communities within our city do so much for some of our local charities. We don't even realize how hard they work and how much money they raise for various charitable events, so the Ballin Isles event was great to be a part of. Palm Beach North Chamber with Senator Lemieux was an interesting book to read, for sure. Was appointed the Healthcare District Finance Committee, the DOT, I-95 Northlake Open House, Palm Beach North Economic Development, and the DEO grant. And thank you to, and congratulations to Beth Kegel in the Palm Beach North Chamber for going out and getting the DEO grant, which was used to help coordinate the Smart and Connected Region, which Maria is a big part of, and to our city staff for actually putting that grant together and putting it out there. It was a state-funded grant to help us understand the needs of North County. And now we get to see what the what the actual results of the study is going to be and how we're gonna be able to utilize that to make sure that not just Palm Beach Gardens, but all of North and Palm Beach County work together to make us a smart and connected region. And that was really it for me. So with that, let's move on to comments from the public that are not on the agenda. And I'm going to skip our former mayor in lieu of our mayor for the day. Where's James? James Delaney, come on up. And just remember, give your name and address for the record, please, James?
Myoa James. Myoa James Delano, and three seven four Magnolia Drive, three three four five eight Jupiter. About a month ago, I got to experience being mayor for a day. My experience as mayor for the day was incredible. I enjoyed everything I saw and learned. My mother and I got to tour the police station, fire department, and learn how city council meetings are run. Everyone we met on this tour was welcoming and amazing. They all have our utmost respect. When we arrived at City Hall, I was welcomed by the mayor and city clerk and given a gift bag of keepsakes. I also had the privilege of witnessing the mayor sign official documents approved by the city council the night before. I also received a city-issued photo ID and met with the police and met with the Assistant Chief of Police. He gave us a tour of Emergency Operations Center, nine-one-one dispatch center, the police department, and mobile command post. My favorite parts were seeing a SWAT truck, the police department, and mobile command post. In the forensic science area, I thought, what I thought was really interesting was the process of DNA and fingerprint identification. On TV, you just see them get a fingerprint, scan it into the system, and get the information of the person. However, in real life, there was a more intricate process. Forensic science is important, however, all of the police, all of the branches of the police department are equally as important, and we would not be able to function without them. Afterwards, we went to the fire department. We met the deputy fire chief, who gave us a tour of the fire department and museum. First, we toured the inside of the fire station, and what I thought was interesting was how firefighters live at the fire station during their twenty-four-hour shifts. This is because firefighters need to be, need to be able to respond to emergencies at any given time. Another thing I found interesting is how firefighters wake up. There's a siren that slowly gets louder in the case of an emergency, and the siren slowly gets louder, so it gives the firefighters time to wake up and oxygenate, as running, as jumping up and running to the truck does not allow time for it. Really fun part was getting to see the fire trucks and spray the hose. That was really fun. I enjoyed that part probably the most. We, I also got to see two antique fire trucks in the fire museum, and I got to ride in the fire truck and pull the siren. That was really amazing. I enjoyed getting to see a bit of what goes on behind the scenes and meeting some everyday heroes. I thank them so much for what they do for us, and thank you for listening to my experience. I have, I have one last request. For a grade in my public speaking class, I need to have an assessment on my presentation given. And anyone who would be willing to do this, I greatly thank you.
Well, James, thank you so much, and I think I'm gonna let Maria sign that for you, since she was the one that worked with you, and that was a great presentation, and thanks for coming. And you've got a lot of great ideas, and hopefully you'll make a great future, something in politics, maybe not, I don't know. But whatever you do, you're on a great start, so thank you for coming today, and Maria, thanks for being a great host. Next speaker, Joe Russo. Name and address for the record, please.
Joe Russo, forty-eight Somerset Terrace, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I have to go after that? I mean, he's phenomenal. I mean, he's phenomenal. I mean, hey, you are very good. I mean, if you need somebody else to sign, I'll even sign. That's really great. I'm just here tonight to congratulate both Carl and Maria on their re-elections. I know you guys worked very hard over the last three years and deserved to be re-elected. I wanna congratulate you. Mayor Marciano, I'd like to congratulate you also on your new post. Many, many meetings, I sat in the reverse side, sitting there as mayor, and you sat out here for many years, probably 10 to 15 at least. And I know you're gonna do a great job, just like everybody else has. I wanna thank the former mayor, former vice mayor, the whole council, on all the work they did over the last three years. You know, we've been very fortunate in the city. I got to serve with some very great people, and Mayor Martino, who's out here tonight, they set the grounds for this city. They started it in the direction it needed to be. We all have just kept it in that direction, and you all are doing the same thing. And for that, I thank you. I thank our city manager and the great staff we have. I don't think we have, I don't think there's a better staff anywhere in the state of Florida in the whole world. They do a great job. You know, when I sat up there, I always said that that was the best asset we had, staff. You know, you can build buildings, you can pay for parks, and you can do all of that, but if you don't have the right staff, you can't get it done right. So I wish you all luck. I'm gonna be back, I guess, next year to congratulate the three of you on your reelection. And, well, I'm just hoping I'm gonna be here, too. And I know in a few years, James will be moving here, and hopefully I'll be able to come in and congratulate him. So you all have a great year, nice coming back, and it's gonna be nice to go home now. Congratulations.
All right, well, we have another card, but this is for an item on the agenda. Oh, wait, we have two that are on the agenda, so I'm gonna hold those for the moment. Do we have a city manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item to bring to your attention. This past Tuesday, we had what one could call a weather event that drew our attention in this city and created some issues for us to deal with. And tonight, we have a story to tell, and David Reyes is gonna tell the story. He's our Community Services Administrator, and he's also the Director of Emergency Management, which is after this event, right after this event occurred, we went into emergency management mode. And I'd like for David to tell you the story of his staff and the reaction of all of the employees in the city, fire, rescue, the Police Department, Public Works, Community Services, all of those employees. David, if you would, tell the story, please.
Good evening, council. Again, for the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator, Director of Emergency Management. And as our city manager just mentioned, we did have a little event on Tuesday afternoon around 4:00 in the afternoon. For about 45 minutes, some areas in the city actually received some significant damage, and a lot of people probably didn't realize, cuz it was localized to some areas within the city. Right after that event, immediately, our Police Department was already out on the road, and they began to assess the situation and began to send those reports down to our Community Services staff. Immediately after that, our Community Services Management staff established a Emergency Operations Command Unit. That was quickly, they just got into the building, pulled the maps, got an emergency command center, started calling the staff to come back into work. By 4:30 in the afternoon, our Public Services staff has already reported within 30 minutes, we have staff already back to work. We have fields already, staff going out on the field to respond and to start assessing damages. Staff immediately started removing debris. PGA National, one of the communities, actually was about four, several trees fell down. There was no access in or out of that community. The access was completely blocked. So our staff immediately responded to that as a priority. And as I'm getting all the reports in my office, and I have my radio, and I can listen to all the conversation, I hear one of the crew chiefs directing staff, "Okay, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna push the material off the road, we're gonna open up one lane of traffic to ensure access to the community for fire and police to respond," which is part of our procedure that we do, we train on a yearly basis to respond to emergencies. And I'm hearing our staff already having that communications on the radio in the field. At the same time, we had another crew that was assisting the Police Department. We had to shut down the intersection at PGA and Military Road completely, because there was power lines, several businesses lost power, traffic signal wasn't working, so they brought the maintenance of traffic, blocked the entire intersection, assisting the Police Department. We had several other teams that were going throughout the community, picking up debris, cleaning up the roads. Some areas had a lot of debris, Burns Road, Sienna Oaks, Alamanda Drive, A-1A, there was large debris on the road blocking whole lanes of traffic. And as you know, rush hour, you know, which typically in Florida, if you're gonna have an event, is usually happening right around that time, when everybody's trying to make it home. So we had teams already deployed doing all that work. Our Engineering Department assisted in responding. Sienna Oaks, there was a complaint about some localized flooding due to a lot of the debris that gets into the inlets and it blocks the water from drainage. So they went out, resolved those issues quickly, and inspected some of the main structure, make sure that everything is working properly. And within 25 to 30 minutes after we received the complaint, water was already dissipating, and all those issues were resolved. So what I really was more impressed about is, within minutes of receiving the call, everyone in staff, everyone who responded to the event shifted to emergency management mode. It was just automatically, everybody followed all the procedures, all the training, everything that we had put in place to respond to a large event was put into place, no matter what the size of the event. Everybody, the communications between our Police Department, Fire Department, Community Services, was just, just amazing to hear them communicating, you know, informing all the different issues. Public Works reporting back to PD, "This is already open, there's access over here, this is, everything has been completed." So communication in all directions was amazing to see that. So as a result of all that, by 7:00 PM that night, all of it was done. You know, all the roads had been cleared, not only the ones that had debris, but we inspected the entire city just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. The entire city was inspected, everything was reported, and everything was back to normal, and we ensured that all the residents and drivers were safe. So all that work was done. And once again, this proved that the commitment, dedication, and the preparation of our staff is just second to none. And they put all that into place, you know, right away during this event, and once again, it proves. So I would say, as you all know, June 1st is right around the corner, and again, we hope that we have another good year, but if we have to deal with something, I can assure you that we are ready, we're prepared, and we have the best staff to ensure the safety of our residents.
That kinda sums up why we live where we live, and thank you, David, and thank you for giving us that report. Ron was telling me a little bit about it this morning, and we thought it would be a great thing for the residents to know not only what the staff did to make sure that the city was up and running as quick as possible, but just to remind everybody, in case they don't know already, that you guys are already on top of things, and that's great. Moving on, anything else? Mr. Manager? Okay. All right, the consent agenda.
Okay, Mark, I'm gonna pull Item C.
I'd like to pull item...
Okay, so we're gonna pull Items B and C. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda minus Items B and C?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can we get a presentation? May I just go alphabetically, if that's okay? Item B, Resolution 16.
Mayor, I need to read the title.
Please.
Resolution 16, 2019. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, supporting the submittal of an application for Transportation Alternatives Program grant to the Florida's Department of Transportation through the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency for the construction of pedestrian crossing enhancements at various locations, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. Good evening. Dawn Sonniborn with the Planning and Zoning Department, and I don't have to be sworn in for this one. This is Resolution 16, 2019. The request is to support a Florida Department of Transportation through the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency for their 2019 Transportation Alternatives Program, and that's for the construction of pedestrian crossing enhancements that's located in 12 areas of our city. To give you a little background, the TA program was designed to help fund connected infrastructure for non-motorized users. And our Pedestrian Crossing Enhancement Program is what we've submitted, and I'll explain that a little bit further. And then if selected, the grant funding would be available July 1st of 2022. And the grant application requires a resolution of support, and that's what this resolution is for. So our enhancement program for pedestrian crossings, like I said, it has, it's 12 existing crosswalks within our city. Most of them are school crossings, and they serve both the public schools and private schools and numerous parks. What we're doing is we're enhancing existing crosswalks with a rectangular rapid flash beacon. And you can see, these are just graphics on the presentation, the actual light within the pavement area be flashing as pedestrians are crossing, so it greatly enhances the visibility of pedestrians that are crossing in the, in the, in the crosswalk. And they will be solar-powered with battery backup. Out of the 12, there's eight crossings on Holly Drive, and you can see all eight listed here at these residential intersections and shown on the graphic. And this is a photograph of each and every one of the crosswalks that were listed. And then these are four other crosswalks that are, one is by St. Mark's, up on Gardens East Drive, and then three others are closer to HL Watkins Middle School for the children that are walking to school, and close to our Lake Catherine Park. And the others, the others along Holly Drive, you can see a lot of the residential area here, there's a lot of pedestrian generators that would go to our many, many parks up to the north, as well as the Palm Beach Gardens High School, the Elementary School, the Riverside Youth Enrichment Center. We also have two churches that have preschools, so it's a lot of pedestrian generators walking across these crosswalks. And these are photographs of the four that are close to HL Watkins Middle School. There is a construction cost estimate that was included in our application. The total funding is $334,01534. We are required to give a percentage for local funds for contingency, so that formula turns out to be $62,91560. But in actuality, our Engineering Department has estimated it'll be about $15,007 annually to operate and maintain these proposed 12 crosswalks throughout the city. And we were excited to receive a letter of support from Chris Garrison for the application, which has already been submitted, and in her letter, she was greatly supporting that to improve the safety of the routes to school. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 16, 2019, is presented.
Thank you, Dawn. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. As Vice Chair of the TPA, I was excited to see this. This was actually on our Executive Director's Report last month, so we're in, it's a $3 million fund, if I'm not mistaken, and it's a $250,000 minimum request, which is interesting. And we have, as you said, Pedestrian Crossing Enhancement Program, there's other pedestrian safety improvements, some complete streets, some wayfinding, so of all of the requests, we're actually the least of all of the requests. There were a couple that were over a million dollars, and one was 900, so we'll see what happens. But thank you for, I don't normally pull items from the consent agenda, but I thought this was nice to know that there is money out there, then hopefully we can get some.
And I would like to also acknowledge the hard work of Todd Engel, our city engineer, and Mike Morrow, that put a lot of time and effort into the application of this. They were great.
Can you bring it back up to the map that shows the layout of where the crosswalks are going? And Maria, you're right, this is, if we're gonna pull anything, this is a good one to pull. So one of the reasons why I wanna make a little comment is because the work in the Platte areas that we've been doing for many years, starting with the Pocket Park, and now the countless homes that we're building, I just wanna bring it up to the public that a lot of this is in the Platte area. So, and now that I've been re-elected again for another three years, we'll continue to work on the Platte's and see what we can do. This is an awesome project, especially along Holly, to really highlight the, you know, the safety of the children, and it's just one more thing we can do for the Platte areas that, you know, we're all really trying to work hard for that community, but that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Anybody else? So can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution 16?
I'll make a motion.
I'll...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for Purchase Award, Item C, Kumra. Can you read the, is there a title? There's no title.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Kumra, Participant on Contracts Director, and the agreement you have before you is for fuel card services. The city has an existing contract with Mill and Oil Company for the delivery of bulk fuel. The bulk fuel is used for the official fleet operations and for the Police Department and the Fire Rescue Department. This contract expires in June of this year, so we need a new contract to maintain continuity of services. At the same time, the Public Works facility, as you already know, is on the, we're trying to sell the property, and that is where the main fuel station is located, so we won't have access to that fuel station. The plan was to construct a new fuel station at the new operation center, which has been constructed east of us, but that won't happen for at least another year. That fuel station won't be stolen for another year or so. So in the meantime, we need to do something, cuz we have a contract that's expiring, and we need access to fuel. So we did some market research, myself and Joe Curry from, who handles fleet operations, and we did a lot of market research, talked to a lot of vendors, and we decided that the best thing to do would be to implement a fuel card system, which will allow the city to purchase fuel at any service station in the country, not just in the city, but in the country. We are piggybacking a national IPA contract, which was competitively solicited, and this allows us to take advantage of discounted added pricing and to contract for service with a fuel vendor, Manseal Oil, who can not just provide fuel card services, but who can also do bulk deliveries, cuz we still need bulk deliveries for the fire rescue stations. The city will be able to control these cards. These are like little credit cards that the drivers will take to the fuel station. They'll have a unique PIN that they have to enter to identify themselves, they have to enter information for the vehicles. We'll be able to control how many gallons they get each day. They can't buy anything else but fuel. If they try to buy something else, it could be declined. We have access to fraud alerts, it's real time, so we have the same kind of control that we have for a purchasing card program. Staff recommends approval, and the cost is about $1 million for one year. At the end of that year, we expect to review and make a determination whether or not to stay with the fuel card services and use our fuel stations as backup, or go back to bulk deliveries. And again, this does not impact the fire rescue stations, they already have their tanks. This is just for police and Public Works and the other units. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Matthew?
Yeah, Kumra, my question is two-part. First, who are all the vendors that we looked at, and how do we know that we're getting the best possible price for the city with this card?
The best possible price you can get in terms of what is the lowest price is to have your own fuel station. We don't have that, so we have to have a stopgap in place. So the best thing to do was to go and look for who has the best fuel card service, and the largest in the country is WEX, which is Wright Express, and Manseal Oil. They're the two largest. But WEX does not do bulk deliveries, and we need bulk deliveries. So the best choice would be Manseal Oil, which not only has fuel card services, but also do bulk deliveries. The price we pay is the price of the pump less the tax and less the rebate that we get because we are on this program with national IPA. Again, this is a stopgap measure, because there's a possibility that this may run into not just this hurricane season, but into the next hurricane season as well. We looked at, when in terms of responding to your question about how many vendors we looked at, we looked at the current vendor, of course. He had like two stations in the city that we could access, but in an event of an emergency or stuff that would bottom leg and that would get us into problems. We looked at other vendors in the city, and again, we looked at WEX on the state contract and Mansfield Oil.
So there's no, Kumra, so there's no way around us having a hiccup if a hurricane comes through, we're out of fuel, we fill up before like everybody else, and the pumps are down and pumps are down.
Yeah, we have, and usually those gas stations allow us to have like facility vehicles a separate line, so you don't have to be competing with the public. So we'd have a separate line because we're regular customers. And again, this is not just for the city. We can access fuel anywhere in the country. We can go anywhere and purchase fuel. Mansfield Oil also has the capability of what we call ISO tanks. So let's say we know a hurricane is coming, and we want to have some bulk fuel stored somewhere, just in the event, we can bring it here and store it here.
Rochelle?
I had a couple of questions at the agenda review that I just wanted to ask or highlight again. First of all, the million-dollar contract, that is a requirements contract, meaning it's a maximum number. What is the average that we actually spend on fuel in the city for a year?
Last year, we spent about $400,000. Last year, we spent about $400,000.
$400,000.
Right. So but remember, this may take us into two hurricane seasons. So we're trying, this is a requirements contract, we're not going to spend a million dollars if we have like a major emergency or something. We want to be able to have that kind of buffer just in the event. So we're not going to buy a million dollars worth of fuel and just sit down with it. This is as needed when you need to purchase it.
The other two questions were, what percentage of the fuel is actually cards, and what percentage is the fire department that will have the tanks and the normal delivery that we get?
The fire department is primarily diesel fuel, and that's in their convault tanks that are based at their fire rescue station. And that's about 70% or so of the total fuel purchases.
And of the 30% that are going to be the cards, who is monitoring what gets spent? How does that get looked at?
This is, this is live through a portal, just like I can, I manage the, administer the purchasing card program, and I can go online and look immediately and see who uses a card, where, what they buy, et cetera, stuff like that. It is the same thing that we can go online, myself and Joe Carrera, who was the Deputy Community Service Administrator, has responsible for fleet operations, have access to the portal, and we'll be able to look and see who is buying what, et cetera.
My other concern was similar to what Carl had mentioned. You had said twice that we're going, could go into two hurricane seasons without us having our own fuel tank backup. You're confident that the fuel cards are, I mean, we can't build the new facility till 2020, so we're kind of stuck now, but we're confident that we have the stations and that we'll be able to get the fuel we need?
We have the fuel, we have access to every fuel station in the city. We have access to every fuel station in the country. I cannot articulate how better you could create that kind of buffer in the event of an emergency.
Kumra, is it unreasonable to ask the local stations, like Kevin's sitting back there, and we're in partnership with him a lot, that maybe some sort of an agreement that the police officers or the fire department comes first when, so they're put on notice in an emergency, we can get in and get back to serving the community?
I think the last hurricane season, we actually did that to accommodate, not the staff, but our vehicles too, to have access to one of the gas stations. So yes, that, this does not prevent us from doing that. We can do that. So we'll do that in the event we have events coming up, to go to Kevin Dalton and say, hey, you know?
I'm not.
Any last comments?
No, because they were all asked.
I don't have any questions. Everyone asked the same questions that I had, so thank you for the presentation. Can I get a motion and approval to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings. I get to read this now.
Yes, you do.
Tonight, we are holding quasi-digital hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 3, 2019, second reading and adoption rezoning request. Resolution 12, 2019, site plan approval for alternate A1A. And ordinance 4, 2019, first reading, Seacoast Utility Authority. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, or other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear on all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening of any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and hope you got?
I do.
Thank you. We're going to move into ordinance 2, 2019, second reading. Can I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 2, 2019. In ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 at Sequente's Florida statutes. Pursuant to application number CPSS-18-08-000011 that provides for an amendment to the city's future land use map by designating two parcels of real property comprising approximately 0.68 acres in size, more or less, as seocommercial, such parcels being located at the southeast corner of the intersection of alternate A1A and Florida Boulevard, approximately 0.5 miles south of the intersection of alternate A1A and Hood Road, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the Florida, from the Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO.
Thank you. Is there a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, there have been no changes on ordinance 2, ordinance 3, or the information that was all presented, which also included Resolution 12. Staff is happy and able to make a presentation if the council desires.
Does anybody need to see a presentation again?
No.
Everybody happy?
Yes.
All right. So let's go, let's go ahead and if I can get a motion for ordinance 2, 2019.
I will make a motion for ordinance 2.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance 3, second reading and adoption. Can I have the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 3, 2019. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of two parcels of real property comprising 0.68 acres in size, more or less, and located on the southeast corner of the intersection of alternate A1A and Florida Boulevard, approximately 0.5 miles south of the intersection of alternate A1A and Hood Road, providing that this parcel of real property is more particularly described herein shall be assigned the city's zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of commercial general CG1, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Resolution 12, 2019, is a companion item to ordinance 3, 2019, and will require council action. Resolution 12, 2019, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, granting site plan and minor conditional use approval for a convenience store with the gas sales and a car wash auto detailing facility on approximately 0.68 acres, more or less, located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Florida Boulevard and alternate A1A, approximately 0.5 miles south of Hood Road, is more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and further purposes.
And Mr. Mayor, we will have one presentation. They'll do one presentation, I'm sure, but then we'll have two separate votes.
Does anybody need another presentation on Resolution 12, ordinance 3? Okay. So let's start by getting a motion for ordinance 3, 2019.
I move that we adopt ordinance 3, 2019.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry, sorry, sorry. We need to open the public hearing first.
No cards, I believe.
There are no cards on this. Close the public hearing. It's just one.
Sorry about that.
Now may...
I'm not very good at that.
She used to hit me when I did that. Anyway, may I now have someone?
Sure. I move that we adopt ordinance 3, 2019.
Hold on one second.
Okay, he can go ahead, and if someone wants to second it, then go ahead and second.
I'll...
Okay. And then just, we need to make sure that you declare any, since it's quasi-digital to declare any experte communications.
Was there any expertes since the last meeting?
And any experte communication on any of the quasi-digital items coming for you this evening?
No.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. May I have a vote on ordinance 3, 2019?
Aye.
Aye.
And Resolution 12, 2019, we will also need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes 5-0. All right. Ordinance 4, 2019, first reading. Clerk, can you please read the title?
Ordinance 4, 2019. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of 40 acres in size, more or less, and located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Hood Road and alternate A1A, to be known as the Seacoast Utility Authority Hood Road Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing that this parcel of real property is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city's zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of Public and Institutional District, PI, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Anne Booth. I'm with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, 610 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, and I have been sworn in. I'm here tonight representing Seacoast Utility Authority in their request to modify their administrative complex, which is located at 4200 Hood Road. We're requesting a rezoning to planned unit development with an underlying zoning of public institutional, which is the existing zoning on the property. We are asking for seven waivers, some of which are for existing conditions, and some are for proposed conditions. And we're asking for site plan approval with a modification to the major conditional use, which is the water plant, to allow building replacements and site improvements. The site, as I mentioned, is located on the south side of Hood Road, and it is an existing 40-acre water utility plant. It is surrounded generally by residential communities, which came in after the plant was existing. The plant was there prior to these developments being built. Their designs have taken into consideration the fact that the plant was there before they were built, but Seacoast has tried to maintain as a good relationship with their adjacent residents, and hopefully the residents have no objections, which they don't seem to have at this point. As mentioned, the existing zoning is public institutional. We are requesting a PUD with underlying zoning of PI. The proposed development will be a revamping and regeneration of the entire administrative complex. Starting at the north end, they will be creating a new entrance, which is in alignment with the old entrance, but it will have a right turn lane into the property. It will widen the entrance, and it will generally raise the grade so that right now what is a lower grade as you're exiting the property will be raised so that you'll have a safer line of sight coming out of the property. We'll also create a nice drive coming into the property that will showcase the front of the building as you drive in, the new administration building. The administration building is a one- and two-story structure, with the second level being only in the center, which will house the IT informational computers, which is a space that has been hardened for weather and flooding events. There is a lunchroom facility, which is part of the main administrative campus, which is situated between the administration building and the operations building. The operations building is just to the south of the lunchroom. There will be a new fleet maintenance warehouse building that will be reoriented to direct the traffic flow into and out of the building going north and south instead of east and west. It's also been shifted to the west to move it further away from the residents. And there will be three storage buildings. One here, one here, which is an existing building, which will be revamped to be consistent with the architectural style, colors, and materials of the proposed complex, and another storage building, which will be in the future at the south end. All of the storage buildings are proposed to house equipment and materials that are currently out on the site, left exposed to the weather. This will allow them to come underneath a canopy so that they are protected and have a longer shelf life. The storage bins, which they need for construction purposes, for materials, will be relocated from the south boundary of the property to the interior of the site. And the operational functions of the facility will generally remain in the center of the property, which currently is further south. So we're moving everything sort of to the north and to the west, or to the east, to get it away from the residents. The changes that we're proposing will improve traffic circulation and the entrance conditions. It'll actually also improve their cost efficiency and operating expenses by consolidating their uses and the functions that are currently housed on the property that are split between buildings, both in the public area and the private area, will make it much more secure for not only the residents, but the visitors. It'll improve and reduce storm-related risks. It will consolidate their operations so that they will be more efficient internally. It will provide the covered storage that they right now do not have, and they are actually reducing their occupied space. They're increasing their storage area, but they're reducing their occupied space. The proposed modifications to the plan will not be, have not been designed to increase the number of employees, the number of vehicles, or the operations changing in any way. It will maintain all of the existing employees. They have the funds currently on hand to finance the improvements, so there will be no additional demands on public services or fees as a result of the improvements. The construction of the project will be done in phases. This is a somewhat complicated, intricate operation in terms of how that will be constructed so that operations and the public can continue to provide, or that Seacoast can continue to provide services to the public while the new buildings are being constructed. The existing administration building and the parking associated with that building will remain in place during construction. The new administration building, which is located immediately behind the existing building, will be constructed along with the lunchroom and the operations building. Once these buildings are completed, they will move everyone into those buildings, and then the next phase will be to demolish the existing building and to construct the new parking area in the front of the building. The new fleet warehouse maintenance building will be the second phase. That building will be constructed, and the existing warehouse building will remain in operation until the new building is constructed. And again, once it's constructed, then the old building will be removed, and then the new storage building can be constructed. There's actually a decrease in the number of overall trips to the site. As I mentioned earlier, there are the same number of employees, and operations are not intended to change. With the new turn lane, they do expect that access will improve. This is a bird's-eye view of what the campus will look like. In the front is the administration building with the second level in the center of the building. There will be a portico that will provide shade and cover as you enter. The billing pay drop-off box will now be located under the awning, so that it will be protected from weather, and it will also provide a more secure drop-off area for payments so that they go directly into the building instead of being housed and located in the parking lot. The campus, which is comprised of the three main buildings, will be connected with covered walkways. That will provide a way for the employees to get back and forth between those buildings without getting rained on or sun. without getting rained on or sun. There's also an open space between the buildings that will allow the employees to have gatherings. They have occasional meetings and learning seminars, and they have activities that they provide for their employees that can be completely contained within this interior courtyard area. The building's style is functional, it's institutional style, which is in keeping with the function and form of the facility. There are, however, a number of additional architectural elements and embellishments that have been provided, including scoring, banding, and color, to enhance the facades. The parapets have been modified to raise certain portions of the parapet to give some visual interest to the building, and also from the view of the residents to the east, to the west, it improves the visibility of what they're looking at. There will be a stone veneer at the entrance to each building. Each building will have similar elements of the trellises, the stone veneer, the scoring, the tile accents, all of those things will be present on all of the buildings. And the colors will be consistent with and complementary to the existing membrane buildings. So we'll have an entire campus of buildings that will be consistent with each other. So as earlier mentioned, there are a number of buildings, the administration building, the operations building. The operations building houses the water testing and the things that employees come and bring testing materials and water in to have that tested in that building. Currently, the operations building that's on the site houses the boardroom. So when the board meets, they have to go into the facility inside the gates, anyone who wants to come in and visit has to go inside the gates. That boardroom will now be located within the administration building, in a secured area where people can, the public can come in and visit and go to the board meetings if they choose, and it will all be efficiently handled within the administration building. The lunchroom and the storage buildings, the storage buildings are fairly typical of a butler building, with the exception of the one existing building. The one existing storage building will be improved with new doors, a slightly extended canopy on the rear, and paint and color that will match the other buildings. One of the things that they are proposing to do, that they would like to do, the timing of this is questionable, is putting in covered parking with solar panels above the covered parking. They had hoped to be able to get the F P L grants that are available on occasion for that. We have requested waivers to allow for covered parking. In the interim, if we can't get those grants to fund that solar panel program, they will be installing landscape islands and trees within those islands in the interim until they can, if that program reestablishes itself, then they will take advantage of that. Excuse me. The buffer landscaping for the affected area is severely limited because of the existing utilities that are underground and the easements that are part of the existing facility that are there. Along the perimeter, along the western perimeter and the southern perimeter, there are a number of lines underground, and Seacoast has established, when they first developed the aisles, an easement with the aisles for maintenance of those areas. The aisles was constructed with a very large perimeter buffer, and there's a six-foot wall on top of a berm that's on the aisles property. The proposed plan proposes to enhance that buffer with additional lustrum trees, which will be planted on the aisles property outside of the Seacoast boundaries, but that will further enhance the aisles screening between their property and the Seacoast property. The public areas where the general public will come into the site will have the majority of the landscaping, as well as the area around the main campus. The south end of the property is a functioning utility plant, and there's limited landscape areas there as it would function, as it would create a conflict with the function of the site. We have moved and located these buildings to increase the landscaping as much as we can along the western boundary to enhance the views from the aisles on the west. We are requesting seven waivers. As I mentioned, some of these are existing and some of them are proposed. The first three relate to the covered canopy parking for the solar panels, to allow fifty spaces in a row to be covered by the solar panels, to allow more than nine parking spaces in a row without a landscape island, and to allow the interior parking spaces along the central core of the driveway not to have shade trees. So we're proposing to put that covered parking, that we would need those three waivers to be able to function, to do that. In the interim, if they are not able to provide that solar panel, they will construct the islands and put in the trees. Waiver number four is to allow a portion of the western buffer to be reduced from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. That is a function of the location of the buildings and some of the existing trees that we're trying to preserve. We've had to move the building slightly to the west to preserve some of the existing oak trees, and in order to do that, that pushed the driveway and parking five feet closer to the boundary of the property, so the twenty-five foot buffer has been reduced to twenty feet. This is all still within the buffer section that I'll show you in just a second. The existing condition of the western and southern buffers, we would like to remain as they currently exist, and we would like to ask for a waiver for the fleet maintenance warehouse building, the foundation landscaping, because the way the building functions and the cars need to go in and out, and the way it works, it just does not allow for landscaping around it. And then the wall sign, we would like to take the wall sign and split it so that it's actually two signs instead of one. It's still below the standard and the code, what the code would allow. Here we have more descriptive, what I just described to you, the three waivers that we're requesting with regard to the solar panels are along the interior corridor of the property. They are not within visible sight of the residents, either to the south or to the west. The conditional use buffer, which requires a twenty-five foot buffer along this side, we've had to reduce this section here from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, but this is also the section where we're providing for those additional lustrum trees. We've asked for the reduction around the foundation of this building, which we need to allow for operations, and we're asking that the existing buffer along the, this section of the property and this section of the property remain because that is where the utility lines currently exist. Did I do that? Here is a cross-section of the section between the administration building and the aisles where we're proposing to put the trees, the lustrum trees. The property boundary is here, the lustrum trees will be here, the wall and berm are located between the lustrum trees and the existing buffer. These are views from the aisle side of the wall, where you can see their buffer has grown up, and there's a, where the top of the canopy of their trees are and their wall, there's a gap there. These proposed trees will fill in that gap along that entire length of that property where we have these new buildings. The sign that we're requesting the waiver for is to allow for the Seacoast Utility Authority, the words and letters to be located along the edge of the canopy that, as you walk in, with the logo being up on the top of the building. So those two, basic two signs have been created. Both of those signs together only equals sixty-six square feet, the code allows ninety square feet, so we're below what the code would allow, even with two signs. We have met with and gotten the support of the aisles homeowners association. They have supported the project and they are very good neighbors. There are a number of public benefits, which some I've gone through, and I will just highlight them in terms of improved operating expenses and energy efficiency, consolidation of uses, reduction of noise and impacts to the neighbors. The buildings will be brought up to code, and the security will be substantially improved. We'll have increased site landscaping and an improved streetscape. The entrance will be safer for the employees, and it will be much more efficient for the employees as well. The covered storage areas will extend the life of the equipment and the materials on the property, and we are providing for an eight-foot sidewalk along Hood Road, which is part of the city's sidewalk improvement program. The property has been posted, we've sent mail notices on two occasions, and we have had a meeting with the homeowners association at their annual meeting in March. So we've been able to present to them, and we have gotten their feedback and incorporated that wherever we can. We've been recommended for approval by staff and the planning and zoning board. If you have any questions, Rem Bishop and Brandon Seeley are here, and we can answer, hopefully, whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, and is there a staff presentation?
No additional staff presentation, staff recommends approval. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We do actually have, well, does anybody have any questions?
I do. And given that the parking spaces for the facility would be used mostly during the day, the solar panels, the energy generated, would be used to, toward the maintenance, towards the building, the administrative building, would that energy go there? Would it go to the grid? Because you're not going to need it to have those lights on at night for the parking, so.
Correct.
What's the idea?
Right, it's not intended for the lights for the parking. It was intended more to provide for additional supplemental power to the plant, but it would primarily go back into the grid, and then they would get a rebate as part of their leasing program with Florida Power and Light.
Do we know how much that would be, how much energy it's supposed to be generating?
I do not. When they looked into it initially, we thought that the program was going to be available. We have since found out that the program is not available. So I'm not sure at what point they will actually be getting, having the ability to put it in. So if and when they do, then they would have to work out all of those details.
That's a shame, because that would be a great addition to the property.
And they agree, and they would really, they want to do it, but the cost to do it on their own is almost a million dollars, and it didn't justify the cost for what they would get out of it. It was a twenty-two-year payout based on what they would have to put into it, it just didn't, they can't justify that expense.
It's certainly understandable why a building built in the early eighties no longer meets the needs of Seacoast and the residents of the city, so I can tell you, after living here thirty years and driving on Hood Road and alternate A one A multiple times a day, I never knew how big that site was. That's how well landscaped and hidden it is from the community. So, and I'm sure that this will be the same when it's done, and the newer building will be an asset to what we already have, so thank you.
Thank you.
So before we continue, I'm going to step back a second. This is my first meeting, right? So I've already made clerical error. We're going to go back and, yeah, I'll make a few more, I'm sure. We're going to go back into the public hearing, and if I can have, I do have a card that I'd like to call up Meg Shannon for the name, name and address for the record, and you've been sworn in.
Good evening, my name is Meg Shannon, eleven eleven Orinoka Way, Palm Beach Gardens. First of all, congratulations to the entire council on what a great job you do for all of us in the city, and we really appreciate it.
And Meg, could you just please state that you were sworn in?
Pardon?
Could you just please say that you were sworn in? Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my community, the aisles, which, as you've seen on the slides, surrounds half of the Seacoast property, and they have been great neighbors to us over the years, and they did a huge project running a large water line all the way up our west side of our property along Military Trail, and then they've had another water line go through the middle of our property. And in both instances, as well as this one, they contacted us in advance and worked with us to see if we had any problems, concerns, questions, or any issues we might have, and if any concern was raised by us at any point in any of those projects, they always were very good about addressing them with us, and we couldn't be happier having them as a neighbor. So we support their project. This one is another one where they met with us in advance, and they did come to our annual meeting and made a presentation, and they answered any questions people had. One that was sort of funny was one of our neighbors, one of our residents said, gee, since you're such good neighbors, can you give us a break on the rates? Which didn't work out, unfortunately. But I just wanted to say, we do support their project, and we look forward to having the additional landscaping added to the west and the south side of the property, which will enhance the views for our residents, and we look forward to seeing the project progress. Thank you.
Thank you, and senior other cards, I'm going to close the public meeting, hearing, and open it back up for discussion. So Rochelle, you've already had it. You need to make a motion to open up the, yeah, that's right, but we need to open up a motion to open up the.
I'll make the motion.
Discussion, I need a second. All in favor? All right, and now we can open up discussion.
No, you just need a motion, a second for discussion. Did you just vote in your favor?
Well, let's have some discussion, shall we? Does anybody have any other discussion? Rochelle, you've had, Matt, do you have any questions?
I think the presentation was complete. Just one question is, you're asking for the waivers for parking for the future, because right now, without the construction, they need to make sure that the parking has the islands in between, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a waiver for future, not for current?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay.
And there is a condition that's included in the resolution that ensures that.
Okay. Other than that, I'm good.
Anne, I got a couple of questions. Can you bring up the picture of the, and remove the clock?
Of the what? Oh.
And then bring up the picture of the overall site. And this is probably more exploratory questions on my behalf, because whatever, what I'm going to say apparently doesn't apply. Just the overall, heard view. I think you passed it.
The existing and the proposed?
The proposed. Sure, this will work. How many of these buildings are new?
All of them, except for the one that's here in the back.
How much money are they spending to put up these buildings?
About fifteen million.
And this is probably directed even more towards staff than you guys. This is where I would like art in public places to kick in. As we redevelop the city, I think we should, there's no art coming into this, or am I, I mean, we're changing the sidewalk, that's great, but.
Actually, sir, there is, the art in public places requirement is required, because the proposed construction exceeds the one million threshold, a condition of approval has been included in the resolution, which will require the applicant to be subject to the art in public places code. So when the applicant has decided which art they would like to do, or how they wish to comply with the art in public places program, they will submit an application.
Okay, good, so we're just not there yet?
We're just not there yet.
Perfect, good answer, thanks. Even still, so I'll say it now out loud, even if we relook at the art in public places that I've been trying to push to begin with, when there's redevelopment, it would be a good time to look at the code and have it apply to people that are redeveloping and putting millions of dollars into redevelopment on buildings and so on, and that's where we can continue to beautify the city with art.
Yes, sir, the art in public places code does pertain to new construction, all new construction, including redevelopment.
Good, thank you. Oh, by the way, I took the tour, Rem drove me around, it was awesome, and if you guys haven't drove around with Rem and he takes you to all the facilities, it's amazing what they do on Hood, and then the infrastructure out off of.
Nursery lane.
Yeah, nursery, so if you haven't done it, I did it a couple of years, and it's, it's not a waste of time, it's really informative, thanks. It's really informative. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Since we've already closed the hearing and had a vote, I guess we are done with ordinance four. Resolution 17, we will do at the next meeting, or do we need to do a reading on that today? Okay, thank you. All right. So we're down to resolutions. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Resolution 23, 2019, can we have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 23, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement with the professional firefighters and paramedics of Palm Beach County, Local 2928 IAAF Incorporated, employed by the city's fire rescue department for fiscal years 2018 to 2019, 2019 to 2020, and 2020 to 2021, authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Cheryl Stewart, Human Resources Administrator. It is my great pleasure this evening to be able to mention that this evening, in light of the fact that the union has voted in favor of ratification, we are proceeding with this resolution this evening for your consideration and ratification. The city began bargaining with the IAAF last, last summer, and this spring, in March, we concluded with a tentative agreement. Over half of the articles in the contract were actually open for, for bargaining, and we successfully concluded that. A few of the highlights, some of the key highlights really were primarily on the operational side pertaining to staffing, promotions, and overtime. We made some adjustments in the contract language that, that would provide management with a better ability, a greater ability to control and reduce overtime in the least costly manner as possible, while at the same time providing all the employees of all the ranks in the collective bargaining unit more practical on-the-job training experience, as well as more time in the seat, time on the job to become better, qualified, and prepared to apply for various promotional exams and opportunities when they become available. In particular, also with respect to training, we made changes in the personal leave and exchange of time articles that would provide, in addition to time off, that's already in the contract, five additional shifts off per year in personal leave and five additional shift exchanges per year specifically for fire service-related training and education as approved by management. And those shifts are separate from their accruals or shifts off that they would get. Another important area addressed that's new to the contract is that all firefighters in the, of the department will have annual medical exams, and as a result of that, the city will be notified whether or not they are fit for duty. In addition to that, new to the contract is all firefighters will have an annual physical fitness assessment in order to maintain the best, a minimum level of physical fitness and well-being necessary to perform their jobs successfully and safely. Turning to more of the financial aspect, in particular regarding salaries, the contract provides for a new salary plan for all of the ranks in the collective bargaining unit, as well as a new upgraded set of pay grades and titles for our community risk reduction, formerly known as our life safety division. The contract, the adjustments that were made followed the same process that we do for all of the employees in the city, particularly in the police contract, where the, these pay, pay ranges are market-driven, which means that we try to do our best to maintain competitive standing with the top three comparator departments in the county, based on data that we had as, as, as dated September of 2018. So in particular, for the first year of the contract effective on ratification by the city, employees would receive, the rank and file would receive a 4% market adjustment to base, plus a 3% across-the-board wage increase. In addition to that, employees employed as of 10, 1, 18, and still employed as of today would receive a one and a half, one-time lump sum payment calculated on their new base salary, including the 4 plus 3%, and then years two and three, again, a 4% market adjustment and a 3% wage increase. The total cost over the three years is about 3.3 million. This would be for about 120 members of the bargaining unit, covered by the contract. With respect to pension, it maintains the existing fire pension plan benefits, except that it does adopt the Florida statutory provision for distributing the annual Chapter 175 premium tax revenues, which is the same process that we have in our PBA, Police Pension Plan, which would allow the city to continue to use a portion of those monies to help offset our pension, the city's pension contributions, and maintaining the share accounts for the firefighters. And so with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. We actually do have a card, so I'd like to see if we can ask Jeff Green to come up. Name and record, and name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Green, 600 Riverside Drive. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Ferris, Mr., I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm a captain with Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue. I'm also a resident. This past March, my peers at Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue elected me as their union representative for IAAF 2928.
I'm sorry, could you please speak louder into the microphone? Thank you so much.
The first thing on our agenda was to meet with Mr. Ferris, to express our desire as Palm Beach Gardens firefighters to work with the city. Our contract negotiations began in July of 2018, and we were able to come to an agreement in March of this year. As a result of hard work and dedication from both sides, Palm Beach Gardens firefighters voted to accept this contract this past week. So at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Ms. Stewart, and council, for supporting us. We are proud of this city, we're proud of this department, and we look forward to having a harmonious relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. So can I get a motion in a second?
We adopt Resolution 23, 2019.
I'll second.
Just bring her back for a discussion.
Sure.
Matthew, would you like to start?
Yeah, I want to begin by thanking all of you for your service. I know that we have one of the finest fire departments in the country, and I believe you get what you pay for, and I'm happy that you all are satisfied with the, with the arrangements that you were able to negotiate. And you are all satisfied? Good. That was my understanding when I spoke to Scott as well. So I'll finish by saying thank you for protecting my, my family and me, and look forward to working with you for many years. If there's anything I can do, please let me know.
Rochelle?
Pretty much the same. Thank you for everything you do, for putting your lives on the line for us, whether it's fighting fires or all the medical emergencies that you respond to. It, it's crazy out there sometimes, and you're our front line, and thank you so much, and I'm glad we were able to come to agreement on this.
Maria?
I want to share a story. Six months ago, maybe eight months ago, we were doing the ribbon cutting for Earth Fair. It was 6:30 in the morning, there were 500 people waiting in line. Earth Fair was giving out gift cards between $5 and $1,000. And, Mark, I believe you were there. And so the president of Earth Fair was there, and he was on the microphone, and he was donating $6,000 to a local organization that teaches kids about food, and the gentleman accepted a check for $6,000 and then went and stood behind us, and then handed the microphone to Beth Kiegel, who is the head of the chamber, who was, you know, welcoming Earth Fair, and as she's talking, this gentleman passes out. So everything stops, and in a matter of 10 minutes, fire rescue was called, fire rescue arrived, the gentleman was put on a gurney, he was triaged, and he was taken away. And then I was handed back the microphone. And so my comment was, well, if you have to go down, go down in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, because we have an award-winning fire department and award-winning police department, so thank you for your service.
That was a great story, and, and the gentleman was okay after all of that, so. Carl, do you have any comments?
I just got a comment. Listen, we love you guys. You know, we all work together, we're all family, and Jeff, congratulations on being nominated to represent all the firefighters. I've been working with you a lot lately and a lot of last year, and you're, you present yourself well, and you're doing a great job. So I encourage everybody in the fire department to continue to build relationships with staff on this side, so that way there's not seven months of negotiations. So I'm assuming that we're all going to vote for this contract. I live at 4908 Grass Leaf Drive. If anything happens, make sure you write that down, GPS, Magnolia Bay, take a left. But you guys do a great job, and just like the police, the fire, you guys are known throughout probably most of the state as one of the better agencies to, to work at, and there's always chatter on guys who want to get into Palm Beach Gardens Fire Department. And I get calls on how do I, you know, how do I get in? Can you call in a favor? So you guys are in a good spot, and I encourage you to, you know, stay with us for the long haul, and we support you, and we support this contract, and I'm happy that you guys got through the cobwebs, and I hope you all are collectively happy as a body over there, because we want you guys happy when you're, when you're here working for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Well, no question, we all, we all support what you do, and in all of my conversations with the city manager during the, during the negotiations, he kept saying that we have the best fire medic staff, employees in the county, wanted to make sure that you were taken care of, that your salaries were going to be in that top three, as Cheryl mentioned, and that was important, I think, for all of us. I mean, we didn't get a chance to talk about it before now, but I'm sure that was something that we all wanted to push for, that, you know, our, our medics and our fire department have the best equipment, have the best opportunity for education and advancement. So thank you for what you guys do. I don't, and thank you to the city manager for, for negotiating that, and I know that it's never easy to negotiate, and during a negotiation, it's never fun, but after it's all said and done, I'm glad everybody's happy. So with that, let's go ahead and have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Five zero. Last thing on our agenda is items for council action and discussion, and really, we just need to review our appointments, and I'm going to just steal this, if you don't mind, because I left mine at home. I'll just share it with you, if that's all right.
Can I just say that, why don't we just keep them all the same, except there's one that is the mayor one, which is usually the, the Palm Beach Workforce Alliance is usually represented by the mayor? So I would make, I would suggest that you take that over. Rochelle is the alternate, so she would stay as the alternate, but other than that, because our terms are so short, we've established relationships in the positions that we're in, and I think we should continue that.
I agree.
I'm so happy you said that, Maria, because I really, I really feel that, you know, we do have short terms. Continuity is very, very important. We're feeling the lack of continuity because of our short terms here on the council, and how hard it is to try to create relationships in such a short period of time. So with that, I, I'm happy to keep everybody where they are, yes?
Yes.
Yes? All right. So let's have a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have anything else you want to talk about? One thing I'd like to try to do is open up some discussion. Does anybody have any questions about any, any items or any thoughts that they have about anything that's not been on the agenda tonight?
I just think we do a heck of a job, considering we can't talk about this stuff before our council meeting, which is hard for us. We do a pretty good job of getting our points across when we're at our meetings, and though some of us might differ in opinions and some are the other, at the end of the day, we all, we all do come together on the same page, and I do appreciate the fact that we have a staff that works as hard as they do to give us as much information as they can. And I appreciate the firefighters for being here tonight. You know, we, we support our police, we support our fire, we support the rest of our staff, and it's important that there's an open dialogue and a working relationship. And as for the rest of our council members, woo-hoo, let's go for another year, another three.
Anything they want to bring up? Do we have a, no? Good. City Attorney, any, any report? All right. Well, thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Ready?